Commission, and before we begin, we have some new faces here on the commission. Dave Stoker, Justin Polly, and Eric Palmer. And welcome aboard and congratulations on your appointment. I'm not sure if that's a good thing or not, but we shall see. Erica, could you please do a roll call and announce staff present? And instruct viewers how they can participate.
Sure thing. Chair Silva.
Here.
Vice Chair Latassa.
Here.
Commissioner Bluth.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Commissioner Palmer.
Here.
Commissioner Polly.
Here.
And Commissioner Stoker.
Here.
Great, we have all members present. I can go ahead and announce staff members present with us today. We have our planning manager Levi Hill, our principal planner Fernando Rovary, our principal planner Christie Sabdo, and myself, recording secretary Erica Barrera. Information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at monterey.gov/Agendas. Remote commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend keeping phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. Thank you for participating in your city government.
Thank you, Erica. We will now turn our attention to the consent agenda. If there's anybody in the audience or at home that has comments regarding the consent, you may speak now. Any hands raised, Erica?
There are two attendees online, but I do not see any hands raised.
I don't see anybody in the chambers. We'll take it back to the commission. Any comments?
I move for approval of the item.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Erica, can we do a roll call, please?
Sure, Chair Silva.
Abstain.
Okay. Vice Chair Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Palmer. Okay, Commissioner Polly.
Abstain.
And Commissioner Stoker.
Abstain. Yeah, we'll have to bring that back for review. So again, as a reminder, you can, for commissioners, you can vote on the minutes if you've viewed the meeting. So we may have to have this come back at the next meeting.
But could I make a motion to?
We can just continue it to the next planning commission meeting.
I make a motion to continue this item to the next table.
I'll set up the mic.
Your mic. We have a motion and a second to continue the consent agenda. Can we get a roll call, please?
Sure, Chair Silva.
Yes.
Vice Chair Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yep.
Commissioner Palmer.
Yes.
Commissioner Polly.
Yes.
And Commissioner Stoker.
Yes.
Great.
Just in case the mic didn't pick that up, that motion was from Commissioner Latassa.
Thank you.
We will now open up general public comments. If any members of the public wishes to speak regarding an item that is not on today's agenda, you may do so by coming up to the podium and stating your name. Not seeing anybody in the chambers, anybody at home.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. We will now start our public hearing. Item number three, 2555 Garden Road. Use permit UP-25-0128 to establish a commercial recreation and entertainment use, private event space, and then an existing commercial building. Applicant James Boselka, Ability Ventures, Inc., owner MHT Holdings LLC, Industrial Administration and Research, et cetera. And let's go ahead and do a staff report. Fernanda?
Thank you, Chair. My name is Fernanda Rovary, principal planner for the city of Monterey. And before you is an application for a use permit for a commercial recreation and entertainment use at 2555 Garden Road. Staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt the attached resolution approving the use permit to establish the use in the existing commercial building at 2555 Garden Road. The site is on the north side of Garden Road, and to the north of it is the airport. This site has employment general, general plan land use designation, and it has industrial zoning. However, the existing building onsite, which is 28,000 square feet, is a commercial building. It doesn't have any industrial uses in it. It's mainly made up of office, professional office and medical office uses. And the site is approximately a three acre site. Because this, this project is adjacent to the airport, staff took the project to the Airport Land Use Commission for a recommendation. And their recommendation was that the project is consistent with the Monterey County Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, and that is attachment to in your packet. In the industrial zone, business and professional offices, including medical offices, are principally permitted, which means that you don't need a use permit to have those uses there. However, a commercial recreation and entertainment use does require a use permit. And so the applicant applied for one. This is the floor plan of the existing 28,000 square foot commercial building. And most of it would remain office uses. So 19,880 square feet would remain office uses and medical offices. And only 8,120 square feet would be converted for the private event space. And that is highlighted in yellow. And this is a close up view of the proposed floor plan. The applicant has indicated that 90% of the events would be for the main tenant of this building, which is EmployeeNet, Inc. And so 90% of the events would be for employees, such as training sessions and exercises, employee appreciation, lunches, et cetera. And 10% would be available for rent to third parties. The proposed hours of operation are Monday to Friday, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And Saturday, 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. And so as you can see, the proposed hours of operation are outside of normal eight to five business hours. So that this is, so that the uses don't conflict with each other. The proposed private event space would have approximately four to five employees. And the event coordinator would hire security staff for groups of 30 or more people. And you can see on the floor plan that on the top is the event center area, which would have tables and chairs and food preparation area and two restrooms. And on the bottom area is also a part of the private event space, but the applicant has indicated that he would like to store some World War II vehicles there for viewing as a part of the private event. So the vehicles would not be available for, for anyone, for anyone from the public to view. They would be closed, not for viewing for the public. The project, the site has 106 parking spaces onsite. And the calculation for the parking requirement for an office building of 28,000 square feet is 102 parking spaces required. And so the current use meets the required parking requirement because they have 106 spaces onsite. And I will now go into the analysis. So in order for the planning commission to approve the use permit, three findings must be made. The first one is that the proposed use is in accord with the objectives of this chapter and the purposes of the zone. And as I mentioned, the industrial zone allows commercial recreation and entertainment uses with a use permit, which the applicant has applied for. The private event space qualifies as a commercial recreation and entertainment use because it would provide passive or spectator entertainment for private guests, as I mentioned, such as trainings or gatherings, employee appreciations, dinners, et cetera. The second finding is that the proposed use and the proposed conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will be consistent with the general plan, will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, or persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood of such use, and will not be detrimental to properties or improvements in the vicinity or to the general welfare of the city. So first of all, the proposed use is consistent with the general plan in that the private event space is consistent with the employment general plan land use designation. The general plan economic element says, encourages to maintain a strong economic base, which will provide tax income for city services, jobs for Monterey residents, and services for residents and visitors. And the proposed use would provide, again, 90% of the events would be for the EmployeeNet employees. And so it supports the economic element. Then I listed, so the use wouldn't be detrimental to the public welfare of the city because the private events would occur on, outside of normal eight to five business hours, and all employees and attendees would park onsite, preventing any parking spillover on Garden Road. For security, again, security staff shall be provided for 30 plus attendees. So there would be no security concerns. The, if the applicant ever wanted to expand the use to other areas of the building or to outside of the building, a permit amendment would be required, which would again ensure that, ensure the, the public welfare of the city and neighborhood. And trash. So another condition that staff added to the resolution is that event coordinator shall arrange for adequate and timely collection and disposal of trash. And this is required also in our city code. Noise. Daytime noise shall not exceed 60 decibels, and nighttime noise shall not exceed 55 decibels. So this would ensure, again, that the use is not detrimental to the neighborhood. Also, the use shall not generate objectionable odors. And again, we've added all of these conditions to the resolution, but in the event that there's a violation of the conditions, there is a way for the planning commission to revoke the use permit, and it would come back to you all for that consideration. So with all those things, with all those conditions added, the use would not be detrimental. And the third finding is that the proposed use will comply with any specific condition required for that use. So the use would be required to comply with all the conditions on the resolution, as well as those recommended by the Airport Land Use Commission. And with that, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution to establish the use at 2555 Garden Road. I'm available for questions, and the applicant, and two of the applicants are here.
Thank you, Fernanda. Any commissioners have questions? I'm going to start on this side and go around. So Dave, do you have any questions for Fernanda? Justin?
No.
Eric? Harry?
No.
Just a quick question. Is this like an automobile museum?
It wouldn't, it's a public, not a public display. So it wouldn't be available for the public to view. It would be a private room that would store the owner's vehicles, but would only be available for the private event people to view.
Thank you.
Fernanda, I have a few questions. You may not be able to answer all of them, in which case you can just reply that the applicant is here and will be able to assist with answering. So let's see, starting with, what is the maximum number of events anticipated per week or per month?
There was no number, but.
It could just be open ended?
Right, the, the applicant did not specify a number.
And then regarding the noise issue, is there any amplified sound anticipated during these events?
The applicant did not specify that.
And I noticed on the plans that there were two single use restrooms. Is, has that been looked at by the applicant in terms of the adequacy for the plumbing fixtures for the number of occupants? This is not a planning commission, per se, use item, but it, it does have something to do with the validity of moving forward with this if it doesn't comply with the, with the codes in terms of plumbing fixtures.
Oh, you mean the water credits?
Not the water credits, just, well, it's kind of a two parts thing. The, the first would be the number of plumbing fixtures, which is established in the plumbing code. And when I kind of looked at the plan and compared it with the plumbing code, it didn't seem like it complied with the code. And then, of course, if we do need extra fixtures, then there's the issue of water credits. And I was wondering if that, you know, if you know anything about whether that has been looked at or not.
So the applicant mentioned that the floor plan that showed the tables and chairs, that was an example of what the room could be used for. And also the food preparation area and the restrooms are also at this point preliminary because they haven't received building permits. And so once they go through the building permit process, they would finalize the floor plan. And obviously, it would have to be consistent with whatever you approved today.
Right, and was, am I not mistaken that the occupancy was assumed to be about 100 people in there? Was that stated in the staff report?
The, oh, you mean, so the trash, the trash condition is they're required to contact Monterey City Disposal to arrange pickup of trash after an event if the event includes 100 plus people.
Okay.
That's where the 100 came from. And then the Airport Land Use Commission placed a maximum of 300 people onsite at any time.
But the, but the actual maximum occupancy would be established by when, when this goes through the building department and they do their calculations based on the size of the space, the type of occupancy, and how many people can be safely accommodated. So there hasn't really been a maximum established right now, in other words.
It hasn't gone through the building permit process, so the building official will determine the maximum capacity, occupancy, maximum number of people allowed in that private event space. That's only for that space, though. But the ALC put a overall, a condition on the entire site, capping occupancy of the entire site at 300 people.
But if that's the case, then would that then not comply with the number of parking spaces onsite?
The 106 parking spaces?
Right, I mean, what is, what does that translate to in terms of maximum number of occupants?
We don't, we don't base our occupancy limitation on the number of parking spaces. So we did place a condition that, that no parking spillover can occur. So all the park, all the uses would have to park onsite. And then it would be up to the applicant to determine how to comply with that.
So if there's an event that exceeds the number of spaces onsite, what, what happens in that scenario?
The applicant would have to come up with a way to make sure everyone parks onsite, either with valet parking or come up with a employee, a shuttle service. But it was a condition recommended by staff that, that they don't park on Garden Road because there is limited available parking on Garden Road.
Thank you, Fernanda. Those are the questions I have, if the applicant would like to come up.
I didn't plan on talking today, but, because she did a great report, actually. I thought, I thought everything she came up with was pretty good. So I'm just going to try to answer your questions, whatever those might be. I'm Jim Boselka, by the way, so, and this is Charles Tope. He's the owner of that building.
Jim, before you start, maybe you can just give the commission a little better understanding as to what type of events this is being planned for. I was a little confused by, it just seemed kind of the, the general terms, but I'm not really getting a feel for this.
Sure. Charles owns a business that employs, how many employees?
Well, 4,000.
4,000 employees. And so every once in a while, he's doing a, you know, presentation or a, you know, awards or something. So it's, it's basically for his employees to come together. And it's going to have a place to cook, you know, a little kitchen in there with the commercial hood and all that, so they can actually serve some food in this space. So that's the, the vision of the events. And as far as the occupancy goes, that, that whole area where the, the vehicles are being stored, those are all World War II vehicles. And pretty impressive. And they're all basically being stored in there for when he wants to use them. You know, I think he takes them to parades and things like that. So he takes them out so people can see them. But it's not a place, it's not going to be a museum type place where you, where you would go and look at those things. It's, it's basically just going to be vehicles in that room, so no occupancy in there.
Are they being stored there currently, or is this a proposed storage?
I'm sorry.
Are the vehicles currently being stored in that space?
They are. Yeah, they are. And that space is, you know, part of this building permit application is going to be making that into a place, an actual place to store vehicles, you know, so we have a fire separation between those and the, and the occupants. And as far as restrooms are concerned, there's a whole nother bank of restrooms right in the center of the building. So they're, they're all connected via a corridor, a rated corridor. And those restrooms would be available to everybody, too. So there's plenty of fixtures for all, all of the occupancy of this space. And the occupancy is going to be, well, it has to be less than 300, but I imagine it's going to be half of that.
So what, so maybe you can help answer the question that I asked Fernanda at the end, which is, in the event that there's going to be a, a party or an award ceremony or something, and there's 250 people there, for instance, as an example. But the onsite parking is 106 stalls. How does that get dealt with?
I, I expect that, that the occupants in that event room are probably going to be in the 100 range. Okay, and, and since they're being done at different times of the day from the workers and the. Okay, and, and since they're being done at different times of the day from the workers and the, and the events, those parking spaces become available. And if they have to, they'll, they'll, you know, they'll valet park some of the vehicles so they can get more vehicles in the, there's a whole back area of parking behind the building. They could, they could valet park some vehicles in there, too, if they have to.
All right, and one of the conditions is for this, for there to be monitoring for, I believe, a year. And so if there's any issues regarding impacts to the Garden Road neighborhood regarding noise or parking, then that would be identified in the-
Yeah, we, we don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, okay.
I have one question. Page five, number four, project is subject to the Categoric Water Allocation Program. The applicant proceeds at his own risk that water may not be available at the time he requests building permits. Do you know if there's enough water allocation at this moment in time before you apply?
I, I don't think we've come to that, to that spot yet. So, well, well, I guess we'll deal with it when we get there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Terry?
My understanding is that the, the water credits and the water allocation for, for like banquet use or dining is based on the number of seats. And so they're going to look at how many seats that you're intending on placing for these events and base the credits on that.
Yeah, I think that's, that's pretty variable. And he's probably done these things before, so he has a good idea about how many people would attend something like that. So I guess we'll deal with it when we get to that spot.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Well, thank you for your consideration today, and I hope you all have a good Thanksgiving, right?
Thank you. We'll now open this up to the public. Is there anybody in chambers that wishes to speak about this? I don't see anybody, anybody at home, Erica?
There are no hands raised.
We'll take this back to the commission deliberations. We'll start with Dave. Justin?
None.
Eric? Harry?
It seems like an appropriate use. Yeah, the water stuff probably will come out okay. It seems like there would be an offset with the car storage area, but that's not really our concern anyway. But it seems like an appropriate use for this, this district.
Andy?
I agree with that.
Bob?
I'm just curious, how will you do the monitoring? I mean, is it just going to be based on if there's any complaints?
Yeah, without a special condition of approval that would require this item to come back before the commission for like a periodic review, similar to, if you recall, previous events based on Lighthouse Avenue, there was a condition that was placed on that. Without that, we would just be dependent on monitoring via code enforcement.
I support this project, and I, you know, I asked a bunch of questions and, and I was satisfied with the responses. Would anybody like to state a motion?
Yeah. So I move that Planning Commission approve UP 250128 to establish a commercial recreation and entertainment use in an existing commercial building at 2555 Garden Road based on the many findings and conditions from the city, the ALUC, and others, as noted in this report.
I'll second.
Okay, we, we have a motion by Commissioner Freeman and a second by Justin or Dave? Or both? Can we get a roll call, please, Erica?
Sure, Chair Silva.
Yes.
Vice Chair Latasa.
Yep.
Commissioner Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Palmer.
Yes.
Commissioner Polly.
Yes.
Commissioner Stoker.
Affirmative.
That has been approved. The decision is appealable within 10 days. We have applications online. It's appealable to the City Council with applications online or in the planning office.
Congratulations. Thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you.
Much for that, Tom. We will now move to item number four, recommending approval of amendments to Chapter 38 of the Monterey City Code to establish minimum density requirements, 20 dwelling units per acre in the multifamily residential overlay district. And Levi, would you provide us with a staff report, please?
Yes, happy to. Good evening, commission. Thank you, Chair Silva, Levi Hill, Planning Manager for the City of Monterey. And as the chair mentioned, and that this item is for a zoning amendment to establish minimum density requirements in our multifamily residential zoning overlay district. So staff recommendation is that the planning commission hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution that would recommend to the City Council an amendment to the zoning code establishing the said minimum density requirements. So a quick background on how this came about. In July 16th, as some of the, in 2024, as some people on this commission recall, the City Council adopted the Monterey 2031 General Plan Update, which included our six-cycle housing element. Within that housing element was a series of programs referred to as the Housing Action Plan. And what that did was set forth a series of programs that the city would commit to. Many involved zoning amendments, all in the interest of facilitating additional housing development in the city. Specifically, on December 17th in 2024, was our first wave of implementation of the Housing Action Plan. And the City Council adopted an amendment to the multifamily residential overlay implementing Program 1B. And primarily what that amendment at that time did in December of last year was to expand the multifamily overlay into additional areas of the city. Previously, it was just there on the south side of Garden Road. And this amendment expanded it to other areas of the city, and then also increased that permitted density from what was 30 dwelling units per acre to 60 dwelling units per acre. And so just quickly to, and go over that, as mentioned, this was the existing multifamily overlay on the south side of Garden Road. And then through the amendment, remained as the MF1 sub-district of the multifamily overlay. And as you see, includes only the properties on the south side of Garden Road. And then one of the added areas that exists now in our multifamily overlay district is the Pacific Munriskass or the MF2 overlay area. And this was applied to our commercial, commercially zoned properties in the Pacific Munriskass area, excluding VAF properties and also single-family and medium-density residential properties. And then, of course, the 1200 Ogojito side, which is the county courthouse side, that was also applied, had the multifamily overlay applied to it to also facilitate future housing development on that site at the time that the county vacates that property. So how the minimum density conversation came about. On July 8th, after we adopted our zoning amendment to expand and amend the multifamily zoning overlay, we received correspondence from the California Housing and Community Development Department, or HCD. And they provided the city with a technical assistance letter and kind of pointed out that with, under their review, the zoning amendment did not achieve the required statutory requirements of Government Code Section 65583.2H2. And that is the specific section that requires that any sites that are rezoned to accommodate your arena in the housing element, requires that a minimum density of 20 dwelling units per acre be applied to those sites. And then they noted in that correspondence that amendments to our zoning code would be required in order to remain in substantial compliance. So city planning staff held a number of meetings with HCD staff, as it's noted on this slide, and both in April, August, and October of 2025. And the primary purposes of those meetings was for the staff to express our concerns, highlighting that under the regulatory water constraints that the city is under, that requiring minimum densities of that level has the potential in some places to further inhibit residential production rather than to encourage it. So we expressed that to HCD numerous times, and ultimately their, their response to us is that the housing element law fails to provide a statutory relief in these instances. And that, under their review, a minimum density requirement is something that the city must comply with under the Government Code Section 65583.2H2. So with that, staff has crafted an amendment to, in the hopes of remaining in substantial compliance under the eyes of HCD, but hopefully crafted in such a way that would also be, remain some level of flexibility for development to continue in these areas. So primarily what the proposed amendment does is apply that minimum density standard of 20 dwelling units per acre to all of the multifamily overlay areas. And this table here shows kind of how that breaks out in a per-unit-to-lot area standpoint, obviously ranging from that one acre at 20 units, all the way down to 3,300 square foot lot would still require two units. Some notable exceptions contained within the zoning amendment is that the, the minimum density standard would only apply to projects that are proposing new habitable floor area, which kind of relates to that second exception that's noted here. And the purpose of that was to allow these conversion projects that we see throughout the city to continue to move forward. I think as most people are aware, under the water credit allocation system in the City of Monterey, if you have an existing site with an existing building, you're, you're held to the amount of water usage that is in place on that site. So that dramatically limits what folks are able to do when converting projects and the amount of units they're able to provide. The water is typically the factor that drives that number. So we were hoping to maintain an environment where conversion projects could still move forward, since we see a lot of housing production in that, in that area. Also noted here is an exception for phased projects, or just more of a clarification that the phased projects would utilize the total unit count at full build-out when calculating density. So that would allow for a, a project that maybe has multiple phases, maybe even a future phase to add on to a project whenever there is more water available to the site, to kind of phase their project out and be looked at as a whole rather than in individual phases. And then another provision that was added was for, that recorded scenic easements would be excluded from the density calculations. As you saw earlier, a big portion of our multifamily overlay is on the south side of Garden Road, which is sandwiched in between Garden Road and the state-designated scenic highway 68. And along that state scenic designated highway is a 100-foot required setback that's in our general plan. So it requires 100 feet of that, all those lots to be maintained free of development, which also really skews the density calculation on some of these large sites in that area. So we wanted to provide some relief in that, because I think everyone agreed that the scenic easement is something that we want to maintain along that corridor, but also want to help facilitate housing production in that area as well. So with that, staff recommendation is that the planning commission hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution recommending that the City Council amend the zoning code to establish minimum density requirements in the multifamily residential overlay district. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Levi. Questions, Dave?
I want to ask a question specifically about the recorded scenic easements. The letter from Matt Nor said that that does not show up on any of their documents, including an ALTA survey, and if it isn't showing up on an ALTA survey, it's not really a recorded easement. So, talk to me.
Sure, that's a great question, and I did see that comment from Matt. And yeah, so he's correct, as written, it would require that the easement be recorded. So as it exists today, it is a setback requirement in the general plan. I think staff's intentions there was that, that, that 100-foot setback area, as described today in the general plan, would be recorded in a scenic easement to memorialize that undevelopable area of the lot in order to take that out of that density calculation.
Who would be recording that, the city or the owner of the property?
The owner of the property at the time of the development proposal.
So that would deal with the issues that were noted in the letter?
He brought up other comments in the letter that had to do with utility easements and lease space and some other things, but I think that would address the specific comment regarding whether or not the scenic easement is recorded or not. I think staff's concern with not requiring it to be in a recorded easement leaves the door open for future development at a later phase that does encroach into that setback, that could be potentially approved via variance or some other mechanism, possibly even a state density bonus request. And staff's intention is to, if, if that area is going to be excluded from a density calculation, that it should be memorialized in a scenic easement and some kind of assurance that it wouldn't be encroached in at a further date.
And just to follow up, were there any other of the comments that were brought up? Most utility easements are recorded easements, although not always. We're talking about PG&E, so. Were there any other concerns brought up in that letter?
He did specifically mention that he would have liked to, he would like to see utility easements also not be included in that density calculation. However, staff's not recommending that at time, at this time. That's a little atypical from what we see in your normal density calculations outside of this type of instance. Typically, easements are counted towards the general lot area when making, same with setbacks. I think he made, also made a comment about not including setbacks in that, in that lot area calculation. And again, that's kind of atypical in density calculations in the, in our field. Thank you. Sure.
I got a question, one of the point, it was actually a pretty good letter that, that he sent in, a thoughtful letter, I thought. The point about topography is actually, I think, a, a good point as well. And I'm wondering, how does the city currently regulate topography? For instance, in the county, I think it's 30%, you just, it's a no, it's a no-build zone. Yeah, so how does the City of Monterey regulate development on slope?
So that, that's actually already addressed in our, there's a definition in our zoning code that actually specifies what they call undevelopable land. And it takes into account areas of slopes of more than 25% to, and says it should not be counted towards density calculations. It also includes like special species habitat as well. So there's already provisions in our zoning code that exclude those areas from that calculation. So we didn't see the need to include it in this as well. And then, of course, there is also a policy in the general plan that actually requires that the planning commission approve development in areas of slope of more than 25%. And some on this commission may remember seeing some of those applications.
And I guess the one other comment I would make is that the CDO is, he makes a good point about the CDO. Does this need to be pressed before that CDO is resolved? Because we're within months now of the state making a decision on that that could potentially affect your decision. I mean, i- if you can't get a water meter and you're telling him to get density beyond which he can furnish water, what do they do?
Yeah, that's kind of the rock and the hard place. The city's in between right now with HCD. As I mentioned, we, we met with them numerous times to explain where, where we're at in this process and where, what our constraints are as a city to develop housing. Unfortunately, they look at it in a very black and white way with the statutory, statute being written the way that it is. And it was essentially comply with the statute or, you know, find yourself in a potential enforcement scenario. I think, to your point, we, our intentions were to craft the language, it's probably not 100% full proof that it won't impact any property, but was, we were hoping to craft the language in such a way that would allow for most development in these areas to still continue utilizing the water credits that they have available to their site. So-
Is that the phased development carve-out that you're basically saying you're phasing this?
Phased development, and then also along the Garden Road, when you remove that scenic, when you remove that 100-foot, you know, scenic easement that runs on the south side of every one of those properties, that has a pretty dramatic impact on that density calculation, because it's a fairly large size of land. So we're thinking the most of the properties, and again, maybe not 100% of them, but most of them will hit that 20 units per acre mark at that point.
Thanks.
Sure.
Eric, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have the same questions. However, do other cities typically do add like flexibility clauses for sites with objective constraints on water supply?
I don't know that other cities have the same constraints on water supply, we do, that are also trying to add 20, a minimum density standard, so I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yeah. So you had to meet with the state, the HDC, three times to sort of figure this out. And what was the density standard before that first meeting with HDC? Just curious.
So there was no minimum density requirement. As it exists today, there is not one. So there's a maximum density, and that's probably what most people are used to running up against, is that, is that maximum density of 60 dwelling units per acre. As we discussed it with HCD staff, we, we explained to them that, you know, most projects in the community don't even come close to hitting the maximum density that they're allowed. And that's, you know, the zoning's not typically what's driving the density that we see on projects. Rather, it's the water available to the site. So we, we did our best in explaining that. And as I, as I mentioned earlier, they're, they're looking at it in a very objective way in this, how it complies with the statutory requirements.
Right. And then the, on Matt Nor's letter on the bottom of the first page, but he has a recommended- rewording of part of the ordinance. Does staff have a position on, you know, he, he shows the, you know, the recorded word being struck and then corridors, zoning, development setbacks being added. And does staff have an opinion on those suggested changes?
Yeah, as noted earlier, I mean, it's, I think we, staff's intentions was to see if we're gonna exclude an area from the lot to, from the density calculation that we wanted to see that memorialized in some, some permanent fashion like a scenic easement. So I think staff's recommendation is that we require that to be placed in an easement. There could be some clarifying language added to that that says that that easement, at what point that easement needs to be recorded, and if it needs to be recorded prior to them submitting, or if it can be recorded just in conjunction with a development application. But I think staff is recommending that it still be required to be placed in an easement. And also, as noted earlier, it's it's kind of atypical to remove setbacks from that kind of calculation. So staff's not recommending that at this time.
And it's, there's somewhere in this post ordinance change that that suggests that these easements be created.
Well, it would be a requirement in the ordinance that for that to be excluded from the density calculation that it would have to be in a scenic easement. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
So as I understand it, twenty is the floor and sixty is the ceiling?
That's correct.
That's quite a leap. How is it? How was sixty chosen and not fifty, forty, thirty?
Sure. So when we originally came through, so in December of last year to apply that additional maximum density of sixty dwelling units per acre, that was as drafted in the housing element program. And that was kind of backed out of to get to that point from our, what our projections were for that, for the multifamily overlay, based on what we're projecting for arena allocation. So in order to achieve the amount of units that we were hoping to account for out of our arena allocation in that overlay area, it was going to require a higher density than what was previously allowed there of the thirty dwelling units per acre. So at that time, that's why staff recommended that that ceiling, so to speak, of a sixty dwelling units per acre to facilitate higher density development. Again, knowing that water was the primary driver, but we didn't want to, there to be an instance where, for some reason, the zoning did prohibit a higher density product there. The twenty comes straight from the statute.
I think everything got covered.
I've got kind of a lingering question that's been on my mind, and it kind of relates to what Matt brought up, which is in the event that there are constraints on the site, whether it's topography or other environmental constraints that would affect the net usable area for determining density. And given the fact that we have a maximum base density of sixty, which is, I mean, come on, that's really a tall order to achieve. Would there be any consideration on the part of the city to allow for waivers or modifications, concessions? In other words, the S, the state density bonus law stuff to facilitate development as a result of these constraints impacting a site. You know, in other words, if a developer is not able to achieve twenty, you know, and Matt gave an example in his letter, as a result of some environmental constraint, would we then be able to suggest, well, if that's the case, we can give you a waiver on building height to achieve twenty. Is that been something that, is that something that the city has looked at? And can it be done as part of this?
So I think that's actually already accounted for in the state density bonus law. So basically what the state density bonus law allows a developer to do is to achieve whatever that achievable density is or allow density on a site. They're allowed under the state law to already invoke state density bonus law to use concessions or waivers to development standards like height and setback. So the fact that they're, you know, they they could apply and in the city of Monterey, we have an inclusionary housing ordinance that requires a certain level, base level of affordability that essentially guarantees almost every development that that is utilizing that that inclusionary ordinance, a certain number of concessions and waivers. So almost every project that meets our inclusionary housing ordinance is almost getting at least two concessions or waivers for their project. And that could be even more if they have a higher affordability level as well. So I think to answer your question, it's, there's already mechanisms in place that will allow a developer to reach a higher density or to to basically ignore certain development standards to reach that higher density. I think what Matt's asking for is to not include certain areas of the lot to help help developments achieve that that minimum density. And that's where things get a little bit complicated in removing setbacks in certain instances. And and as you know, we have to remain somewhat objective in our standards now and applying to these residential developments.
But Levi, my understanding is that in order to trigger this density bonus, you have to have a base density that is maximum, not minimum. So in this case, you would have to start with sixty and then apply the density bonus. It's based on the maximum base density.
It's based on the affordability that's being given to the site and the percentage of affordability.
And so maximum base density has no factor in this?
It doesn't establish what the maximum density is, but so density bonus is twofold. So there's two things that happen with density bonus. There's actual bonus density bonus, which is additional units that go above and beyond what the maximum permitted density for a site is. And then there's the concessions and waivers. And one, they're kind of two separate. Once you meet the requirements to utilize state density bonus law, which is just meeting that base level percentage of affordability for a project, and that's percentage of units. You're able to utilize the concessions and waivers that come with that, regardless if you're even asking for additional density.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. I wasn't aware of that. So it's a two pronged.
Yes, as long as you meet that per base level percentage of, you know, twenty percent affordable. You can, even if you're not asking for that additional density, you can get relief from those development standards.
Good to know. Okay. We'll open this up to public. Is there anyone in the chambers that want to speak to this?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brad Slama. Gentlemen, welcome to the commission. Glad you're here. Thanks for your service. For the record, I am vehemently opposed to minimum densities. They put you into a small little box of what can be built. And the remaining lots that we mostly have are very difficult to build on. And so while it may be twenty units minimum, sometimes it pushes it even higher because of topography and developable land. And as you can see from Mr. Norris' letter, he's looking for all the carve outs he can get. Setbacks, scenic easements, everything. You're already getting pushed back from developers because we know it's very difficult to attain in a lot of scenarios. Twenty units an acre, what that'll mean is three story buildings everywhere, multifamily condos only. No town, no townhomes, nothing that's, you know, multitudine options when it comes to development. I understand the position that the city's in, and ultimately will respect whatever decision comes out of that. I know dealing with HCD and possibly opening up our elements, not a good idea, but I will tell you, multiple jurisdictions in the Bay Area have had builder remedy applications come in to downsize the zoning where the minimum density requirements meant that projects couldn't be built financially. And so when the jurisdiction was outside of their housing element being fulfilled and they were exposed to builders remedy, they provide applications that were under the minimum density requirement. So that's the slippery slope we get on when we talk about this. A lot of projects will not happen because of minimum density requirements. But do what you must. I have a request. In the building code, what happens is when we submit a project in twenty twenty-five and that project carries over to twenty twenty-six, we stay under twenty twenty-five's building code requirements. And even though our project gets through plan check and plan review in twenty twenty-six, we don't have to redo our plans every time the building code changes. I have a project on Garden Road that's been in process for three years and millions of dollars that will very difficult, will be very difficult to kind of skirt this new code. My request is that you direct staff to grandfather us in the same way that we do with building applications so that we can keep this project going at a real, realistic density of about fifteen to sixteen units an acre and not basically throw away three years of plans and a whole bunch of work. I feel like that would be borderline criminal. So I would make that request. Thank you.
Erica, anybody online?
Sure. I see two hands raised. I can go ahead and allow Matt Nor to unmute. It looks like Matt's unmuted. Can you hear us, Matt?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Chair Silva and fellow planning commissioners. My name is Matt Nor. I wanted to thank you for your time this afternoon and taking the, your time before the meeting to review the letter I submitted. For better or worse, we all find ourselves trying to navigate the various state housing laws and programs. Feels like a new one like comes out every month or so, and we're just like, we're just trying to keep up and just like what's, what's new, what's out and how is this all shaking out? I got to give my hats off to staff for doing an amazing job trying to balance and navigate this constant changing set of rules. I certainly appreciate the spirit of the text that staff has written. Again, though, we do really look at and encourage the commission to consider the proposed amended language on the calculating the density. As I included in that letter, an example of our existing twenty-two hundred Garden Road site plan, just to demonstrate all of the nuances that are going on there, whether it be the scenic setback. There's actually a city sewer main that runs through the site. Other utility easements, topography, protected oak and pine trees and so forth. But in addition to that, the the bigger issue really is the water availability and topic. And our twenty twenty, twenty-two hundred Garden Road site is an undeveloped site and it's subject to the CDO. And so until that CDO is lifted, which I know there's all this talk about, oh, it's imminent, but we've been hearing that for years and we're very skeptical about that. But so what we're trying to do is implement an onsite wells. And those onsite wells also have certain setbacks and requirements for keeping building footprint, sewer mains and laterals out of those ways. So in, and on top of that, the well has a certain production level based on its pumping capability and water quality. And so maybe when we do these test wells, we find that we can actually achieve maybe twelve, fifteen units per acre supported by these onsite wells because we can't get water from a connection. I think the city would much, and even the state would much rather see at least a twelve, fifteen unit per acre project than nothing at all because we can't achieve that density minimum. We certainly can, and we we do plan on utilizing some of those concessions and waivers. But we want to develop our projects being a good neighbor. The last thing I want to do is throw a four story building five feet from the city setback right away. I just, it just ruins, I think, the street scape and and the and the neighborhood character. And so we're, we're very respectful and trying to balance those concessions and waivers and apply them respectfully. So thank you for your time and and consideration and look forward to continuing.
Thank you, Matt. Erica, anybody else?
Yes, I can go ahead and allow Patrick Orozco to unmute.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Great. I want also compliment staff for a thoughtful presentation. We very much appreciate the dialogue and the creative approach to solving these really complex problems. That said, I do want to emphasize the importance of the specific examples that Matt presented in his letter. Nearly all of them affect our site. Our site has a cell tower on it. So there are existing improvements that have existing setbacks for public safety that we need to navigate. They are in conflict as are the setbacks from highway sixty with this density requirement. The density requirement ultimately is is an arbitrary standard. You know, as Brad highlighted, the, we as developers are incentivized to maximize the value of our property. And more importantly, we're incentivized to build product that is meeting the market. So unit count is one market factor. The type of project is another. We recently entitled the three hundred and fifty-six unit podium project in San City. That project may never get built because it is of a construction type that is too expensive, even though it maximizes density. So bedroom count would be a superior standard to unit count because Brad has already built a considerable number of studios. We would like to build two bedrooms. We're asking for your consideration to avoid boxing this into an arbitrary corner. And I will highlight that the city of Monterey is not alone. We're having the same conversation with the county and the county is pushing back. The county is proposing a significantly lesser maximum density bonus. They're talking, you know, six to eight. And even there, we're pushing back on the six to eight units per acre because of the very same reasons that, you know, we're already dealing with the extremely challenging entitlement environment. We really do not need additional impediments. We don't need circumstances where we're having to record scenic easements on our own property and then restricted from doing things that are not in conflict with the city zoning code, such as putting infrastructure in them or other specific issues that we may need to navigate. Ultimately, you know, the, the, the goal here is to facilitate housing. All housing in this area is good housing. You have done a commendable job and actually pioneered some of the policy that we're advocating for in other parts of of the county here. And I really just want to make sure that you as a leader.
Your time limit.
Thank you.
Erica, is there anybody else?
There are no other attendees online.
We'll take this back to the planning commission. Dave, do you have any deliberations?
Have you got staff questions?
Go ahead.
So you've heard people in the public say, fight the state. Okay, Levi. Fight the state. Is it possible?
So I think there's a, you know, I think the larger answer to that question is there, we can continue conversations with the state. I think, I think that's one of the things I'd like to add. You know, there's a lot of carve outs there being proposed even beyond what staff has drafted currently to, you know, create flexible language. I think it's important to note that this gets reviewed by HCD once more. So they'll still determine whether or not this amendment is complying with that statute and their, and their perspective. So I think that's the risk that we run by really swiss cheesing this, this amendment to a point where we run the risk of being right back in this situation, reviewing a different minimum density provision. So I think that's what, why whenever staff is obviously very much in favor and in any ways that we can facilitate housing production in these areas, we're also trying to legitimately go forward to HCD and say that we've implemented the requirements of the statute. So I think with that being said, you know, we have been meeting with HCD. They have been, you know, having that conversation, that dialogue. It doesn't appear that at the staff level, that's been getting us very far and hasn't seemed to change their answer. I think there's a larger question as to how much we want to challenge the state and that's kind of beyond the authority of city staff and would be for ultimately for our city council to decide how much we wanted to to push back on that.
Okay. And then a follow up. There, the other discussions about the other easements on the site that they used as an example. There are PG&E easements, there are sewer easements. There are P G N easements, there are sewer easements, there are potentially well easements. Can't those be recorded so therefore they fit what the staff is saying? That recorded easements would be taken away from the site?
That could be, that could be an amendment that the commission, if they if they desire, could be added to the proposed text. Again, I just think the risk involved with that is taking that back to HCD and adding yet another. Reduction and as they're going to view it in that density calculation. I can't say at this point in time if they'd be opposed to it. But it is just, you know, one more provision to what I think they view as a pretty simple requirement of twenty dwelling units per acre. I think the more complicated we make it, the more attention it's going to get. But that's definitely something that if the commission felt was something they wanted to see staff incorporate into the ordinance. They can do that.
Okay, and then I'm sorry, one more. Somebody else invited me here. I don't know. The whole issue of water, which I've got to say I've been talking about on this body for thirty-plus years, it's still here. They have a very realistic point of that you can drill a well and right now we don't have water that the public can provide. And the well can only provide X amount of water for the site. What do we do then?
I think under the proposed text, I would recommend that that development look at phasing the project. To meet the requirements of the amendment as the proposed ordinance has written. And propose a project that does provide for a higher density in the complete build-out.
Could we but if they build it? And even if they got water, could we force them then to build the rest of it? Let's get real.
I don't I don't know that. I guess it would depend on how the entitlement structured. But to answer your question in a realistic fashion, I don't think you can force anyone to build a multifamily housing development.
Thank you.
Sure.
I guess in that, can I?
Absolutely.
In that vein, questioning, I I this is probably more for discussion. I I don't quite understand the resistance towards creating a carve-out for water. Like they request in the letter, it's I don't think the phasing for the point David just made like is necessarily the best way to do that. Is there something else going on that I'm missing? Like, why wouldn't you create a carve-out for, you know, we realize like. If fixture units are unavailable on this site, we will cap the density at whatever available units may be built with the allowable water needed to the site. You know, why can't that be placed in this?
Sure. The resistance not from the city staff point. It's that idea was the first thing we expressed and floated to HCD and did not get any traction.
HCD was shooting it down.
Yeah.
And I guess my other question is, we've heard a couple of mentions of extenuating circumstances on sites and whatnot. You know, in looking at these maps, we're not talking about a huge number of sites. I mean, we're talking like a handful on Garden Road and then a handful in this area and then I'm not quite sure what's going on with the courthouse site. But do would a variance, would they be able to apply for a variance to exonerate them from this minimum density?
So it's rather complicated because there's typically not variances to density. That's typically not something you see a variance be given for or allowed to be given for under the code and ours doesn't prescribe that. That's it's usually again, it's you're usually looking at the opposite, usually looking at someone who's running into an issue with the maximum density and. State density bonus has been, that is the variance for density as most are concerned with. Did you just don't run into the issue with minimum density and that being an issue in in most instances? So to answer your question, it's not something that you see a variance given for.
Is there something in the city code that prohibits someone requesting a variance for a minimum density?
The code establishes what variances can be granted for. Yeah, and density is a zoning standard. It's usually carved out as not being something that can be granted variance for.
But this amendment would in and of itself be a amendment to the code. So couldn't we revise the code while we do this to allow for a minimum density variance?
Again, that's something that we'd have to let HCD review and I think they would see that as undermining the minimum density standard that they're requiring.
Thanks.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm hearing a lot of concerns about anything that creates housing element compliance issues. So to add a question about the public comment in terms of applying new standards to approve projects. And so do do approved projects have any kind of vested rights? Would the proposed minimum density apply to projects that already have discretionary discretionary approvals?
So if the projects already receive its entitlements, it's entitled. So this would not impact those projects. One of the commenters earlier mentioned projects that are still going through the entitlement process. So that those projects would be impacted by this if they're not entitled before the effectuation date of the ordinance. So there's, as as mentioned, that commenter requested that there be a provision added to the ordinance. That would more or less grandfather those projects in or at least establish that those projects are subject to the regulations set in place at the time of application. Rather than the new new ordinance. There's also state level protections for those projects that if you're familiar with Senate Bill three thirty. You can submit a pre preliminary application under that state law that is also intended to lock in regulations and standards. For for property, for proposed projects that they meet the requirements for that. So I think staff would be, I'm not sure, without consulting with the city attorney's office. On what our ability is to actually incorporate provisions into the ordinance that would grandfather those pending projects that are under review that have been applied for. But if the commission wanted to add a provision or direct staff on in a motion to incorporate and work with the city attorney's office. To incorporate that kind of language in there, we would be happy to do that and would support that. Just to kind of reinforce maybe the protections found in SB three thirty at a local level.
Thank you. So the this recorded seating easement term, just the semantics of it, is that? How important is the recorded term?
So the recordation is what formalizes or memorializes that area as as, I guess, unbuildable. If that easement's dedicated to the benefit of the city in the way of a scenic easement. So the recordation is what makes it formal and, you know, twenty-five fifty years from now, that easement is still what's going to be in place there. As it exists today, it's simply a setback, which is still has some enforceability to it, obviously, from a development standard perspective. But as as many on this commission who's, you know, reviewed and approved variances to setbacks. There is relief and mechanisms for relief to setbacks built into the code. So I think from where staff is sitting, we were just like I said earlier, looking for a, taking a position. That if that's going to be excluded from the calculations, that it should be locked in as unbuildable area. But ultimately, if the commission wants to change that language, just something more along the lines of scenic setback, you know, even specifying along highway sixty-eight. That's something the commission can do. It's just leaves that door open in the future for someone to say. Exclude that area from their density calculation and then at a later date, propose development in that area.
Yeah, so the because we're, you know, this particular developer has, you know, forces interested in their property and Garden Road. And it seems like that that is that hundred-foot setback is not an easement right now. It's just a setback.
That's correct. That's correct.
And we could specifically address that for these small number of parcels, just as a carve-out. That seems very practical at this point.
Sure, I guess from staff's perspectives, we we see easements get recorded often. And we're not completely understanding what the challenge lies in recording that area in an easement.
Well, it would just be easy for us to specifically, I mean, keep the language of the of the scenic easement. But then add and including this hundred-foot setback on Garden Road. You know, it sort of solves a little bit of a problem for these particular developers. And I don't see any big penalty or problem with it, really.
Yeah, I don't think staff sees a problem in general with the language as written, to be honest. It's it's requires that they record a already unbuildable area into a scenic easement.
Right, but if we specifically carved out the hundred-foot setback, then they wouldn't have to worry about the recorded business. It would just be a part that they could exclude from their calculation.
Yeah, I would expect if you given the option, nobody would record the easement. Then they would just opt to acknowledge the setback.
But Terry, there's there's also the, you know, in the letter, in the diagram, there's also the the well, the, you know, the the setback. That they wanted to also do a carve-out, this bell tower, you know, all all these items kind of culminating.
The calculation he did, unless I'm misreading it, only excludes the that hundred-foot setback. That's enough to get them over the twenty-unit threshold, it seems like. So that's, I mean, I I hate to just create, I hate to tailor this.
But practically, when you.
This one owner.
I I know, but that's what we got. But, you know, when you look at that plan and you look at the the well, you look at the cell tower. You look at all these other things that are impacting the development potential of that site, you're ending up with just a little small portion of the site as a whole.
Right, yeah.
And I think that was the point that they were making in the letter is that by the time you start including all this other stuff, even though we can't take advantage of these setbacks. You know, the setback for the cell tower, the well, it has to be included. Nonetheless, it does have a direct impact on what you can actually physically build.
Right. I I think that's always the challenge with any developer who buys a piece of property is is reviewing the the existing. Configuration of the lot and, you know, what are all the easements crossing over it?
But but they bought it before the the minimum density standards.
Yeah, yeah, it seems like there's a way of sort of addressing that here.
And they do, they they meet that minimum threshold just by carving out scene amusement.
Right.
I think it's just sort of all like a procedural difference of opinion between staff and the applicant. Like staff feels that this is something, we record seen easements on projects all the time. And it's sure you've done it as well. It's something that's done and I think the applicant is saying that, no, we'd like this put in place. So that we don't have to record it.
Right.
Yeah.
And the city attorney has been involved in these semantics?
Yeah, so they 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 review our ordinances, but they review them in more detail and when they go through preparation for city council.
Andy.
Yeah, my question follows on all of this. Say, in a real-time situation. As Justin said, there aren't that many sites available for development. In today's world. On what basis are people being turned down for development of multifamily? Projects? Or is anybody being turned down today for multifamily development project based on the density?
No, not.
So this is like, we're talking principal, not not actual.
Correct. Well, I mean, I think if this were, if this amendment is applied.
Yeah.
We do run the potential of projects, as you've heard tonight, that would be unable to meet that minimum threshold. And, you know, to use your terms, would be more or less turned down for entitlement if they were unable to meet that threshold.
The reason for my question is, if somebody were being turned down on an actual project today, then we would be talking about legal trouble. Little suits, lawsuits and such. I mean, the developer wants to build this project.
Okay, I I think we're missing something in the three meetings that you had with HCD. I mean, how much pushback are we going to get if you begin to change the language that you've already got? I mean, the objective is to be able to survive with the review that you're going to have with that. And so in a sense, you know, we should be working with you to make sure that you get through that process. And I'm not sure how we implement our ability to succeed with HCD. And then also meet these other requirements that we're talking about too. I think we want all of it, but we don't want to end up pushing too hard on staff. To go back on another fourth phone call with HDC or this and then find out that we're back here again.
Sure, and that's and that's something staff's happy to do. We're we're like I said, we if if the commission stance on this tonight is that they'd like to see certain provisions. You know, added to the proposed ordinance and that staff, you know, gets that reviewed by HCD to see if that's, I know, palatable for them. And then bring it back before this commission and report back. We can do that as well.
Your general knowledge from the previous discussions, you'd advise us if there's going to be something that you've got serious pushback?
Yeah, the primary conversations with the HCD that we had during those three meetings was to. It was really the same conversation with three different levels of of supervisory presence in the meeting. But it was to go over the water issue and to explain that, you know, if your goal is to increase housing production. That this is not by default going to have that effect in the city of Monterey under the current water constraints the city's under. It would in fact have possibly the opposite effect in eliminating potential development proposals. And so we laid that out in great detail with, you know, lower-level staff, middle-level staff and ultimately their top-level enforcement wing was on the call. And their their advice to us was to to take, to explore options for legislative action to address this issue. Which is a fancy way of saying, talk to your state senator and your state reps and get the law changed. So that's how far we got with with that conversation. Now, that didn't get into the details of some of these carve-outs and these very specific nuances that we're talking about tonight. So that's not to say that they can't find some level of flexibility. You know, we're already asking them to find a certain level of flexibility with what you're looking at in the proposed ordinance. So if if the commission's, you know, stance is that they want to see staff really find that line with HCD. And what they're willing to accept before bringing this forward to you, we can do that as well.
Levi, what is the ultimate consequence of not complying?
Yeah, so long-term, ultimately, if we we fail to comply with the statutory requirements of housing element law. We run the risk of falling out of substantial compliance. And then there's a multitude of enforcement actions that HCD has the the ability to take at that point, including, you know, they can seize permit authority from the city. And then there's also monetary fines that if you read much in the news are are quite steep and are on the daily. So that they have a lot of enforcement ability in that way. Now, that's not something that happens overnight. If we fail to act on this tonight, we're not going to receive a call from HCD tomorrow. Revoking our compliance or anything like that. It's something they are watching. We are communicate in communication with them. They do know that we are bringing this forward to the commission tonight to show that we are addressing their concerns. So as I think, as long as we have that conversation open with them and we're continuing that dialogue, I don't think we run the risk of falling into an enforcement issue at this point.
And how long can we kick this can down the road? And string this thing along, you know, I mean, literally, I mean, I'm serious. I mean, if 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 this is a situation where HCD is aware that we're still having a dialogue regarding this. And there isn't consensus with the community. Are we talking in general terms, a six-month deadline, a two-year deadline? What is what is the timeframe on this?
So, yeah, the original, you know, our implementation for the re-zonings were required to be done. Technically, by the end of twenty twenty-four and we reached, did that, we accomplished that with this initial zoning amendment. To expand the multifamily residential overlay and increase the density. Their perspective is that 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 was incomplete because we didn't include a provision for minimum density. So there's not a hard and fast. I mean, they're looking at it from this interesting angle of, one, we've, we still haven't complied with. What we're supposed to comply with at the end of twenty twenty-four. But they also are looking at it in the lens of this is, we're a city that is making a, you know, a good faith effort. And a significant effort to be in compliance. And we're doing that through our meetings and communication with them and and where other cities are much further behind than us. And are run much more risk of falling into an enforcement. But it is something they contacted us about. It is something that they, you know. When we haven't communicated with them, you know. when we haven't communicated with them, you know, readily enough, they do reach out and inquire. So it's hard to say what the actual deadline would be, but we are running into the holidays, so I think there's a little bit of gray.
I mean, it's entirely feasible that this could go back and forth between planning commission and staff and your communications with HCD numerous times. You know, we may see the same thing come before us two or three more times before we're satisfied. And that could be six months.
Yeah, we may even have to meet with HCD numerous times in between there to make sure that the language is sufficient.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this with the provision that staff work with HCD and express to HCD certain modifications that we've discussed here, which, and I just have some bullet points here. This whole notion of phasing projects is interesting to me in that even though the city cannot compel a developer to say, okay, do phase two, you can submit a phasing plan at the initial application and build out a portion of it that might be feasible for the developer at that time. And then once other situations arise in the future, they could do the future phase. But if those situations never materialize, they shouldn't be penalized for not meeting the minimum density at the outset. So I think this whole notion of phasing is is compelling and interesting, and I'd like to see further dialogue with the city and the state on that. The notion of the easements and recording of utility easements and so forth, I think, is something that we've heard tonight and I want to get the state's opinion on whether or not that is going to damper their enthusiasm for creating the minimum density and the way it's being calculated. I'd like to have the city advise applicants of projects that are unentitled about the SB 330 benefits. And that can happen without any HCD coordination. Anyway, those are thoughts that I have on this and I'd like to make a motion to have the city proceed accordingly if anybody has any comments or a second.
I'd like to add if the city attorney could look into projects, previous projects that relied on previous standards and, you know, has, because I imagine HCD wouldn't want to threaten the project viability of projects that are in the pipeline. So I wonder if that might be a question as well. If the committee agrees to that.
Could you have me say that? I didn't quite follow.
Yeah, so the Mr. Slama suggested that, and I feel like it's a reasonable request if if there's projects that are already in the application stage or have any discretionary approval previous to what the minimum density requirements, if they would have to be subject to these new requirements.
Right, but in those particular cases, was there, I mean, I don't want to open up the public hearing, but there was an opportunity to do a pre-app.
I think we ever closed it.
Yeah, it's closed.
But did we close it? I didn't.
I brought it back.
Okay, sorry.
But in those particular cases, there was an opportunity to do a pre-app with SB 330 protections. And I don't know whether that happened or not. But there is mechanisms already in place to protect that, to grandfather projects and, okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Erica, do you want to do a?
Want to restate the motion?
Motion, yes.
Well, you understand the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's my.
I know it's continuance.
The motion is to continue the application and direct city staff to continue working with HCD and to consider the following items. One, which is phasing of projects. Two, the recordation of easements. And in third, advising unentitled project applicants of SB 330 protections. That was the motion.
But no mention of a grandfather kind of a address.
Well, that's what I just responded to when Eric brought it up. So there is a mechanism currently in place to grandfather applications so that they're protected from future requirements. And that's what the SB 330 pre-app is all about.
Okay. I didn't know that. And as Senate Bill 330 is existing law, there have been so many of them. I haven't, I get that one confused. I guess I'll have to look it up. So.
So there is already a mechanism in place to grandfather these types of projects to protect them from future administrative requirements that may impact the viability of the project.
When I had asked about that, Levi had mentioned that that's something that staff would be happy to look into.
And we can, we can consult with the city attorney's office as well, ensure that SB 330 captures that concern. And then also if we can, you know, we can discuss with them what our options are to add additional local provision within the ordinance that further ensures that as well. So we'll do that as well in our consultation with HCD under the current motion.
Very good.
Just to make it a little bit more succinct, I think we want the motion to say, you mentioned phasing. I would say phasing and how it relates to the issue of water entitlements. Because I think that's an important issue that we need staff to address if they're going to bring this back to us. So that would be one. The other one would be this SB 330 and does it really do what staff thinks it's going to do for developers? Those would be the two, I think, that are the most crucial.
Yeah, I purposely left out the issue regarding water when I spoke about phasing. And the reason for that is there could be other constraints besides water that may compel somebody to want to phase a project, such as economic downturn or any number of issues that are kind of beyond what we can actually predict. And we already know that the state has given a dim response when the city tried to indicate that we have this CDO and the water issue and they were not interested in that. So it didn't seem like that was getting much traction. And I think just the general idea that their projects could be phased for any number of reasons and leave it open ended, I think is preferable.
I've got one other question for staff before you vote. I have seen in the past when there is an upcoming change to a city rule where the city starts enforcing the rule before it's actually adopted. And I won't give you exact examples, but I know they exist. I want to make sure that this continuance doesn't make it so the staff is going, well, this is probably coming up, so we're not going to take your application or we're going to enforce the thing that we are not voting on tonight. So, staff?
Yeah, staff has no intentions of implementing any ordinance before it's effective.
You promise?
I promise.
All right.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Erica?
Sure, Chair Silva.
Yes.
Vice Chair Latasa.
Yes.
Commissioner Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Palmer.
Yes.
Commissioner Polly.
Yes.
And Commissioner Stoker.
Yes.
Great. It's been approved to continue.
Thank you, Erica. Moving on to item number five, recommending approval of amendments to the Monterey City Code to dissolve the ARC and transfer powers and duties to the Planning Commission. Levi, are you going to present a report on this?
I am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Silva. As the chair mentioned, this is a zoning amendment to dissolve the Architectural Review Committee and transfer the powers and duties to the Planning Commission. Now we'll do a brief presentation. And the staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution recommended to the city council of the amendment to dissolve the Architectural Review Committee and transfer those powers and duties to the PC. So a little bit of background, I think most folks here are probably familiar, but for the benefit of the public, in case you're not, the, on June 17th, the city council considered an item dealing with consolidation of its boards, commissions and committees. And they took a look at all the various committees and commissions and boards throughout the city and looked for opportunities to consolidate where they could. And the purpose of this was to, in an attempt to streamline the processes for applicants and to also reduce the impact to administrative resources for the city staff. So where they came out on that was that they, in reviewing all the various committees and boards, they found that there is enough common common threads in between the Planning Commission, the Architectural Review Committee, that they saw an opportunity for that consolidation. And so at the July 23rd city council meeting, they directed staff to prepare the necessary ordinance amendments to dissolve the ARC formally and to transfer those powers and duties to the Planning Commission. So, chapter two, administration of the Monterey City Code, actually establishes the powers and duties of the ARC. And this group, since this item is proposing to transfer all those special duties and powers to this commission, felt that this commission should be aware of what those are. So as listed here in chapter two, the Architectural Review Committee is empowered to review projects to ensure the promotion and orderly development, ensure high quality design that is harmonious with project surroundings and implement the general plan as well as neighborhood plans to preserve and promote the visual character of the city. And then, of course, they do that through reviewing and oversee minimum supplemental requirements for administering architectural review in the city. So the proposed ordinance before you this evening would amend many chapters to the Monterey City Code, including chapters 2, 31, 33, 37 and 38. And if you're not familiar, that's our administration section in chapter two. Chapter 31 is our sign ordinance, 33 is our subdivision ordinance, 37 is our tree preservation ordinance and 38 is our zoning code. But however, only amendments to chapter 38, the zoning code, fall under the purview of the Planning Commission. So that's really in your action tonight. The ordinance includes amendments to various chapters throughout the city code. But your recommendation would apply specifically to those changes in chapter 38. And primarily what those changes are is a replacement of references to the ARC with PC. And that happens in very, many, many areas of the zoning code as shown in the ordinance before you, including your packet. And then the way that happens is also that the amendment would grant the Planning Commission the authority to review and oversee architectural review rather than the Architectural Review Committee. And again, here is cited in that process is to promote orderly development and ensure high quality design. So with that, the planning commission, or I'm sorry, the planning staff has recommended the planning commission hold a public hearing, adopt a resolution, recommending to the city council the amendment to the zoning code to dissolve the ARC and transfer powers and duties to the planning commission. I'm happy to answer any questions.
There was a letter saying we can't do this. Can we?
I, we.
What?
The letter from Julie Gorman?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sure. So yes, we reviewed the comment and that comment was made previously when the city council was considering this consolidation. And it's under our understanding and consultation with the city attorney's office that the, and the proposed ordinance addresses that. There is language in there specifically notes that the ARC has powers and responsibilities granted to it through the charter and that that language has been included in the ordinance to pass those duties onto the planning commission. I do believe it's the intention to follow up with a ballot measure to clean that language up in the charter to align that. But as far as staff is, and the understanding of staff is that this has been drafted and vetted by the city attorney's office and is legally feasible. Thank you, sure.
Any other questions?
How much will this actually, has anybody calculated? You know, is there going to be yearly saving of $4,314?
I've counted exactly how many minutes this is going to save me.
I guess ARC takes, you know, it's kind of the rats leaving the sinking ship here.
I always thought, thanks.
It was a very good starting point. I have to say that I was interested in Julie Gorman's letter because over the last three years, we have had visitor accommodation facilities come to the planning commission for what I call ordinary improvements. I don't mean they're minor, but ordinary improvements. Balconies, roofs, windows, fences, stairs. Why are they coming to the planning commission? And the answer has been that because of the charter of the city, the planning commission has to hear these issues of ordinary repairs. So I don't see how Julie's complaint changes really anything that's already being done. The planning commission is already doing this. So maybe you could clarify.
Sure. Yeah, so you're correct. As stipulated in the city's charter and then duplicated in the VAF section of the zoning code, where it talks about what the review procedures are for VAF properties. As currently written, it requires that non-structural, ordinary repairs, as you mentioned, no change, like for like change, just repairs, that are non-structural, require the review of the Architectural Review Committee. So those who are joining us from ARC is used to seeing kind of the same types of projects of a lesser scale that don't have a structural component to it. And then it specifies that ordinary repairs that do involve a structural change require the planning commission. And so while a little heavy handed, yes, you're correct. One way or the other, you're going to an architectural review committee meeting to have that repair reviewed or you're going to a planning commission meeting to have that repair reviewed. So you're correct, under the proposed ordinance, it just simply means that no matter what, the planning commission wants to review that. And administratively, it removes an appeal step. And I think that's something else that's maybe not, you know, covered in the agenda report, but currently, if you go to the ARC and a member of the public or an applicant is unhappy with their decision at the ARC, they can pay a fee, appeal that decision to the planning commission. And then once again, if they're unhappy with that decision, they can pay an additional fee and appeal that decision to the city council. This essentially removes a step in that process and also a fee.
Levi, is there any movement to, on the city's part, to initiate a ballot measure to try to address this?
I'm sure. So I think if I understand it every year or every other year, they prepare a certain amount of ballot measures that the council basically makes a motion to put on the ballot. I expect it usually is there are some that are what I would call housekeeping measures that are there to, you know, clean up inconsistencies. I would imagine that this would definitely be one if approval be added to that cleanup.
I can't wait. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this? Erica, anybody online?
There are no hands raised.
Close the public comment period and bring it back to the PC. Comments?
Seems like it went through a legal review and I'm excited that we still get to use some ARC projects because those are interesting too.
The fear is that our agenda would become cluttered with sign and tree permit applications.
Yeah.
But that's, you know, that's staff's job to try to bear those out before they get to us. So it seems like it is a a bit of trimming of sales and trying to limit staff time. So I'm supportive of it.
I think it needs to be, I think it needs to be coupled with an intent to put more items on the consent agenda. And less items that like we, I'm just coming from the ARC and I found it incredibly annoying, just the sort of mundane. I don't think a hotel should have to have a public hearing to replace its windows. And I think there's things that just are going to public hearing that I think, you know, if we've got a sign application that staff has vetted and they are recommending approval, in my opinion, something like that should go right to the consent agenda. And not necessarily, because we're, we're going to get bogged down with very small things. And I think it's sort of incumbent on this this body to.
Here, here.
Yes.
How would we direct staff, if we were to make a motion to that effect, what language would we? Staff, if we were to make a motion to that effect, what language would we then? Convey to you to address this?
Yeah, I think staff, staff here is the commission and we're happy to start. I think we agree. I think it's something that's already been discussed internally about utilizing the consent agenda more. I think the commission and they are seeing us utilize the consent agenda rather sparingly. And that's to not circumvent a public process. But I think, you know, now that we're looking at. You know, measures to to ensure efficiency and, you know, the proper use of everyone's time. I think staff's already looked at areas where we could place those types of projects on the consent agenda. Really what it's going to be, it'll be to this commission, whether or not, you know, to set that, find that balance. So staff, I mean, in theory, we could place every item on the consent agenda as for the commission to pull items, whether or not they want to. So I think it'll be for the commission to kind of find that comfort level and and staff kind of in tandem, finding that comfort level with. We'll start proposing things on the consent agenda, assuming no members of the public want to pull those items. You know, the commission has the authority to leave those on the consent agenda and vote on them at that time. I think also coupled with that, as staffs looked at opportunities. Again, for our ARC, and I think most folks on this commission have served on ARC at some point in time, knows that there's administrative architectural review as well. The ARC has the authority to, currently in the code, the ARC is who has the authority to establish that list of items that can be administratively reviewed and approved. That authority will be transferred to the Planning Commission once this ordinance is effective. And staff is looking at opportunities to bring that list back to this commission, look for opportunities where there's comfort in having things approved administratively. Without public hearing and coming for this, this, these meetings. So again, that will be for this commission to ultimately decide how comfortable they are with that list as proposed and if they want to make modifications to that.
Chair. I thought there was also a state law that it's either here or coming down directing us for more design standards that we had to work within that theoretically there would be less ARC anyway.
That's correct. So many state laws are restrict cities to applying what they call only objective design standards. And those are, you know, non-subjective design requirements for projects that don't necessarily. Necessitate discretionary or subjective review from a commission like this. So you're correct. In a lot of ways, architectural review and design review statewide is moving to a much more objective based, black and white. You either meet this requirement or you don't type of review. So I think that also, you know, behooves itself to modifying that administrative list as well.
And these are certain qualifying projects, not all housing projects.
Correct, like meeting certain criteria under the state laws.
All right, any other comments? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve an ordinance dissolving the Architectural Review Committee and transferring its powers and duties to the Planning Commission. As stated in the agenda report.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Freeman to. Approve the. Abandonment of the ARC and transfer its powers to the PC and a second by Commissioner Lataza. Erica?
Sure, Chair Silva.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lataza.
Yep.
Commissioner Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Palmer.
Yes.
Commissioner Polly.
Yes.
And Commissioner Stoker.
Yes.
That's been approved.
Commissioner comments? Well, I want to just start off by saying congratulations on the three new members. As I stated earlier, I'm not sure if this is a blessing or a curse. You shall find out. And but before we all start chatting away, maybe we can get some brief introductions for those who are not familiar with these. With our new esteemed members, starting with David.
You want to hear why I'm here?
Why you're esteemed?
A brief introduction.
Brief introduction. I've lived in Monterey a long time. I have served in the past on city boards and commissions for thirty plus years. Love the city of Monterey, live in a very old house here, love being back here. My office is in the city of Monterey. So I'm pleased to be back here.
Very good. Justin?
Justin Polly, I've been running the architectural practice here in Monterey for about fifteen years now. Like David, my home is in Monterey, my office is just around the corner. And so.
Whoops. Your microphone. I'm not going to start again, but. So I love the city and I'm excited to be on the PC.
Very good. Eric?
Eric Palmer. I worked at the city for fifteen years up until about four years ago. I was in the communications office, so worked with. A lot of the planning staff on communicating planning projects. So got me really interested in the subject. Now I work at Regent Monterey, which is the Waste Management District, doing the same thing. I was on the ARC for two years and I'm on the county's housing advisory. Committee. So just trying to give back since I'm a resident and live a few blocks up the hill.
Welcome, everybody, and I hope you enjoy your time on the planning commission. Do we have any staff updates?
Yes, thank you. As noted in the report, just a couple of follow up items from our city council meetings recently. Follow up to our November fourth city council meeting, and as this commission reviewed. The council did adopt the planning commission recommendation and approved the first reading of an ordinance that would establish regulations and development standards for firearms and ammunition cells in the city. And at that same meeting, the city council considered the appeal to the planning commission's decision to deny the use permit application for a daycare general use at twenty four hundred Garden Road. And the result of that hearing was that the council did vote to overturn the planning commission's denial of that item. And initiate and direct staff to initiate the ALUCP override process. So that's the result. I believe is unanimous.
ours was unanimous too.
That's what I said.
Yeah, they they win.
They always do.
They always. Thank you, Levi.
Oh, and just one other item, I'm sorry, from the November nineteenth. As some are aware, the city council received the subcommittee recommendations for the appointments to the boards, committees and commissions. And that's how we ended up with our three new commissioners.
Thank you, Levi.
I had wanted to.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, you done?
I'm done.
I just wanted to say that the. The as far as fighting the state goes, the city of Carmel is sort of being our. Test case on ADUs and cell towers. And we'll see where they get to. The the city staff has been extremely cautious on these. Issues and done a really methodical process of of. Getting our regulations in line with state law. I've supported. Where we are, but we'll see the city of Carmel is taking a different tact and and they're, they're going to be interesting guinea pigs for us.
Levi, in just as a segue, when we have future cell tower applications. Because of the new membership of the planning commission, it might be advisable to, when you start your staff report, to do just a brief. Kind of a summary of the regulations. That have already happened. That impacts the way that we make a decision. Because new members are not going to understand the history of this stuff.
Absolutely. I agree.
And and under commission comments, are we there?
We're still kind of free flowing. Go ahead.
I will not be here at the next meeting. I did not know that I would be a planning commissioner and but I, anybody who will be in Calhoun, Georgia during the next meeting, I'm happy to buy dinner at the Cracker Barrel. So feel free.
Any other comments?
I'd still like to see about staff working in an option for us to begin the process of a specific plan for Garden Road. I think, given it's been the last three meetings.
Exactly.
About it, we should really try to get that on the schedule and whatever you would need us to help would be appreciated.
You know, and also the definition of easements, scenic highway, cell tower interruptions. All of that could create a zone that would not be. You know, that would be like a zone not included in their calculations and that specific plan could really go a long way. Not to to make our objections little tiny things, but a broad swath of definitions. That would allow the project developers to rely on these exceptions.
Interesting. And then everybody have a great day. Thanks.
Yay, yay.
Hey. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.